So, welcome everybody. And I'm happy to be able to host this first talk or series of questions and answers with Ms. Christy Fraga, who is running for school board, as you all know. We will have another talk on next Tuesday on the 28th, which I encourage you to sign up if you haven't yet. So, the structure today is going to be, I've collected all the questions that you have sent and organized them according to themes or areas of interest. And we're going to encourage Ms. Fraga to give us their answers. And if you do have a follow-up question to her answer, just type it in the chat and we'll try to get to those questions too. But we have quite a few questions and very interesting ones, so I'm going to jump into those. The first question is from Ms. Belinda Leon, that I don't see her amongst us, but the question is a good one. So what do you think are the top three priorities for a school board member? And this is your chance to introduce yourself too. I think it was a good opening question.
Yes, sorry, we were talking for a little bit, so I forgot to introduce myself. So, thank you very much and Lauta for taking the time to put this together. I know we had to postpone the first one just because of everything that was happening. And now we saw, you know, the rise in cases again and families concerned. So, I'm glad that we are having the opportunity to connect for a little bit and share these very important topics and questions amongst each other and have an open discussion in the most acceptably sociable, social way we can right now through virtual interchange and connection. So, this is wonderful to be able to connect with our community this way. And the ability that we have, the technology to be able to do that is also something we should be grateful for. So, I think that this is a great question. In my, and I'll give you what I believe are the three top priorities and what I would make my priorities as a school board member. I think number one, it's obviously finding ways to have equitable resources and allocating those resources to schools through funding. Advocating for the funding that is, that we need at the school, at our district and in the Miami-Dade County District as a whole amongst the state of Florida, is to make sure that we are in Tallahassee, forging those relationships to make sure that we're getting equitable funding for our district. And it doesn't stop in Tallahassee, it should also be in Washington. And making sure that we are maximizing the resources that we have to allocate to our schools, our programming and our teachers and educators. So, I think that that's for me, one of the top priorities, making sure that we are being fiscally responsible and putting our children and our students first in making sure that programming is being allocated in all the needs, in all the areas that are most needed. So, making sure that we're expanding those resources without cutting important programming. Secondly, I think that we need to be a voice for, we're not only in avenue, but the vehicle of transmitting the message from our students, our families, our communities, and our teachers and our educators and creating policy for those, which leads me to number three, which is creating policy that is also equitable and is providing the right streamlined education for our students, making sure that every child has the opportunity to reach their full potential. Every student reaches their full potential through policy and curriculum that we have the opportunity to change and forge. So, I think for me, those are the three priorities. Obviously, as a council member in my experience and as an elected official and in policymaking, for me, it's been very beneficial to be open to my community, be a good listener and understand the needs of the community and be able to provide those resources and solutions for our community. And additionally, I think my background and experience in accounting and finance, being that this is a $5 billion budget at the school board, or almost a $5 billion budget, it's like 4.8 billion, it really gives me the opportunity to have a different perspective when looking at this budget and understanding where we could best allocate resources and how. So, I think that it's extremely important to have that experience as a policymaker. And the fact that I bring experience from the municipal level, I think gives me a huge advantage on being able to work with such a large budget as the city already also has, you know, not as big as 4.8 billion dollars, but a sufficient budget, a significantly large budget that we use in making sure our city has the services that best, that serve our citizens best and provide the best quality of life. So, transitioning that experience plus my private sector experience into the school board, I think is going to be a great benefit to the district.
Okay, thank you. So, those would be your three. So then we're going to go, Mr. Oswaldo Samper has a few questions and we go directly into policy. With what is your stand, stance regarding charter schools?
So, I've always been a proponent of choice. I think parents have to have a choice. I believe that, and I think everyone should understand that education is not a one-size-fits-all. Students have special needs at times and they have special talents. And for them to be able to reach their full potential in those sectors and talents, schools have different programming. In Doral particularly, and I think this is where I really began to understand the importance of having options such as charter schools and private schools in communities. Here in Doral, we experienced a huge boom and growth in population within a very short timeframe. And we would not have been able to meet the student station requirements. And we saw an overpopulation of our public schools in this area. And charter schools were of a benefit to us because we were able to provide student stations through the private sector and give parents a choice and be able to provide, you know, students an opportunity to learn in smaller classroom sizes and get the resources they needed. So, I think it's important to have choice for parents, you know. But what I think, I think when possible, it should absolutely be the first choice to have a public school. And I'll share an experience here in Doral that I was, I was a big part of. And that was the school that's opening up in Park Central, which is going to be the Andra Castillo School. That school originally was going to be a charter school. And I happened to be having a meeting with the developers of Lennar at the time. This was in 2014. I happened to be meeting with them on an issue in Doral. And I asked them about that land and how that was coming along with that school. And they told me that they were going to sign with a charter school that day to give that land to that charter school, to build the charter school. And I told them, "We need a public school, we need another public school in our area." And I provided an avenue for them to be able to negotiate with the charter, with the public school system through our current school board member. And I'm sure she'll remember this. And I provided that connection with them. And today, we are going to have the Andra Castillo School. We're going to have a public school instead of a charter school because they were able to come to the table and negotiate and make a deal with the developer at the time. So, we're going to have a public school versus a charter school because I do believe that if we can have public schools and there is funding available for them, they should take priority because they give priority to our children. And I believe that we have a great public school system that is now competitive because of charter schools and provides great programming, like the magnet programmings that we have. And this school in particular is going to have a STEM programming. So, I think that it's going to be a wonderful addition to the schools that we have here in Doral.
Okay, I have a little follow-up question regarding charter schools. What would you do regarding the lack of oversight and the nepotism that there is?
I think that like in everything that comes with public dollars and bureaucracy, which, you know, is created when policy is created or can be created when policy is created. I think that our job is to make sure that there's equitable transparency amongst what public schools need to provide and charter schools. And that starts at the state level and it's our job to advocate for that. And if we can create policy locally to make sure that there's transparency, then we absolutely should. And I'm not going to tell you that I am fully versed on all the policy, on all the available policy that we could create legally to provide more transparency from charter schools. But I will become very, very well-versed in that. And it's something that I did when I became a council member. I may have not known every working facet of the municipality, but I became, when I dive into something, I become fully informed and educated on the subject. And I rely a lot on experts to be able to give us the right information to make sure that we are, you know, that we're putting our best foot forward to provide transparency for our taxpayers.
Okay. Mr. Ozzy, if you have a follow-up question for Ms. Fraga, we are glad to receive it over the chat. Your next question is, what are your ideas on better funding for schools? You mentioned it in big strokes, but do you have very specific ideas that you would propose?
So, you know, when you ask me about, or when anyone asks me about funding for schools, immediately my business hat comes on. And I think about, well, if I want to create new streams of revenue, new sources of revenue without raising taxes, I have to think of ways to create revenue. I have to create ways to make, and that's the only way to do that is to bring the private sector in. So, I think we need to look at those opportunities. I would, my initial idea, and again legally, I don't know that this would be something that we could do. And it would be something that I would definitely look further into and work with our administrators to see if it's something that is possible. But if you tell me, Christy, go find new funding sources for our schools without raising our taxes, I would say, I would look at the school, at the charter school models and say, "Well, okay, how are charter schools for profit?" They're not, the school is not for profit. What's for profit is the management company that manages the charter schools. So, my question is, why not create public-private partnerships where the school board can offer to manage some of these charter schools and charge a fee for it? So, again, I don't know legally whether there's a possibility for the school board to be able to enter into such negotiations and contracts. But it's something that I would look at because otherwise, the only other sources of funding that we would have is to go and create the relationships and bring funding in more from the state and from the federal government, which ultimately, at the end of the day, is funded by our tax dollars as well. So, unless there's some other funding source that I am not privy to at this time or don't know of within the school board. And again, there's a million, it's such a large organization and there are so many moving pieces to the different levels that I'm sure there's going to be new discoveries for me that I'll be able to be better, you know, better equipped to provide the resources we need within our district. And that is going to be where I will focus my energy, is making sure that we are getting all the resources needed for our schools so that our children are getting the best education that they can and that our families are getting the attention they need. But if you ask me to provide additional funding for our schools, that's immediately where my head would go is, how do I bring in these revenue sources without raising taxes?
Okay, thank you. How can you better support teachers in Miami-Dade?
So, I, I'm sorry?
You in particular?
Yeah, so, I'll tell you, I have great relationships with teachers. I have teachers in my family that have been teaching for over 30 years in our public school system. I have great friends that are teachers, surrounded by teachers in many aspects. And I'll tell you, one of the biggest, I don't want to say complaints, but one of their, one of their suggestions is that they're not heard enough. They are not, they don't feel represented enough. They don't feel like, like the board comes to them enough to ask for suggestions and, you know, and they don't feel that they have a say on a lot of the curriculum. Like when curriculum is implemented, they hear that, you know, a group of teachers was put together or, you know, a committee of teachers was put together to instruct, you know, what curriculum was in there, what books were going to be bought. But, you know, I know teachers that have been in the system for 30 years and they're like, "I don't know who these teachers are that they're putting together. Are they, you know, are they union members? Some of them are not union members because they don't feel that the union represents them correctly. Some of them are, and they're like, "I don't know who these groups, the committees of teachers are made up of." So, what they would like to see, and I think what we could do and what I would do if I'm allotted to do, would be to provide more surveying of our teachers to understand what their needs are in their grade levels because not every grade level is the same. You know, one of the things that we do is we create a broad spectrum. A lot of times when we're talking about policymaking as a K through 12, you know, spectrum. So, we say from K to 12, but it's impossible because, you know, taking like distance learning, for example, that we're seeing right now, a student in high school is not going to learn the same in distance learning as a kindergartner, as a first grader. It's just the attention, the span of attention is different. The engagement that they need is different, the social interaction they need is different. And so, teachers feel sometimes that policies are made based on a very large spectrum. And what they think, what they suggest is that it's looked up, it's looked on more as in a grade level perspective and that surveys are done more on a grade level perspective, using the teachers as that tool. The problem is, they feel a lot of times if they speak up, they're going to have, you know, they'll be, they could be reprimanded or, or, you know, they want to be able to do it in a very safe environment where they feel like they can be honest about their opinions and that their input is really used to form some of the curriculum that's being taught because they feel restricted to testing curriculum. One of them said to me, you know, "I feel like I'm graded based on whether my students can read an ad versus whether my students are well-rounded in other aspects." It's if my students can't read an ad, I fail. And if my students can read an ad, I pass. And it shouldn't be that way. Yes, obviously, those are important factors, but, you know, I'm not asked about some of the other curriculum that's imposed on me. So, I think that we could better support our teachers by being more actively involved in engaging with what their opinions are. And I think another thing is that teachers, the funding obviously in schools has been cut so much where you see teachers who have, you know, multiple. And again, this is also generational and in the, the age of the child and the grade. But, you know, kindergarten teachers who have 24 kids and no help. There's no teacher's aid, there's no, you know, there's no assistance. It started as they had teacher's aid and then they were shared teacher's aids. And then, you know, there was like, you would have an aid like a couple of times a week. And then, and now they're down to not having any assistance. And there's one teacher for 24, you know, kindergartners. So, it cuts the one-on-one time with that student so they feel that they could use some more support in having some additional assistance in the classrooms.
Okay, thank you. The next question is from a parent, Natalia Johnny. And this one's in Spanish, so I'm going to go with it. Consideraría incorporar en el programa educativo proyectos a desarrollarse en equipos de trabajo en donde se enseñen herramientas para trabajar en equipo. No solamente proyectos que se hagan en la casa o que se hagan en equipos por fuera sino dentro de la escuela.
Claro, quiere que lo conteste en español, ¿verdad?
Por favor.
Okay. Yo creo que es extremadamente importante que incorporemos de nuevo más enseñamiento en grupos social y proyectos más sociales. Yo soy, yo creo mucho en lo que se llama, eh... Ahora se me fue la palabra en español, pero en el, eh, work, eh, learning and work. Yeah, no, eh, there is, hay clases que se pueden hacer donde puedes trabajar como parte del curriculum de la clase. So, esas, esa...
Sí, te entiendo, pero eso se aplica, eso se aplica para muchachos más grandes. Eso no se puede hacer en un kindergarten.
No, sería para los muchachos más, pero lo que digo es que eso yo siempre he sido, he apoyado la idea de tener life skills en las clases. Que los, y más para los más adolescentes, que tengan la oportunidad de work experience. Es a la palabra, que tengan work, ajá, experiencia laboral como uno de los, eh, uno de los electivos que pueden tener. ¿Cómo se aplica a niños más pequeños? Bueno, es tener trabajos más en grupos sociales, más proyectos en lo que es trabajar en equipo con sus alumnos, con los alumnos. Y definitivamente creo que se han quitado mucho de la parte social de nuestro, nuestro curriculum. Y no vemos ya la parte, por ejemplo, cuando yo iba al colegio teníamos clase común por decir que home ec, donde hacíamos proyectos juntos. And we would build something, construíamos algo. Ya esas clases no se ven en los colegios. Muchas veces creo que tiene que ver también con el curriculum que escoge el principal para ese colegio. Pero creo que le estamos haciendo una justicia a los niños de quitarle el work experience o la experiencia de trabajar más en grupos sociales.
Okay. Gracias. Hay un par de preguntas que están relacionadas con eso. El foco excesivo en el test estandarizado, I'm going to switch to English because this one contains Spanish. So, this excessive focus on standardized testing has massacred those courses that you're talking about. I think that the choice doesn't come from the principal. The choice is imposed, it's not a choice. As you were saying, teachers are graded on the passing grade of their students. So, would you change that? Would you advocate for changing that focus or would you continue with that?
No, absolutely, I would advocate for changing that. And what I meant by principals choose, there are certain, certain... And again, this is something that I've learned through understanding the whole process. Principals can choose the electives that are allowed in certain grade levels. And so, that's where they provide like, well, if they're going to have home ec or if they're going to have, you know, whatever ceramics, part of the scene, they like different, the arts programs and things like that. But no, absolutely, I think that the testing structure and standards that we've created in our education system has, it's made children more depressed, more anxious. You know, I think that it's caused a lot of, you know, emotional and mental health issues for our children. You know, we see a lot more parents turning to homeschooling because they feel that they can allow their child to be a little bit more creative and not have to be so structured in the way they learn. You know, we hear today that kids even, you know, and they don't have time to go outside and play and be more outdoors, which allows them to be, to, you know, have more energy to burn so they can come into the classrooms and be more focused and take in more information and retain that information. They're just, they go from one subject to the next and there's just no break in between. And in reality, when we are in our real lives, do we actually function that way? The answer is no. And we're, you know, we're putting these kids almost in a box and telling them they can't move from there and they can't even get up and go to the bathroom. And they can't talk and they can't socialize. And although there needs to be certain structures so that you could get through curriculum, you know, kids are very stressed in the environment we see today in schools. And I would say even teachers are very stressed in the environment that we see in schools today. They feel constrained to what, why they became a teacher, which is, a lot of them are very creative. And they want to teach children in a way that they can retain information. And unfortunately, that structure is not, is not available to them in the curriculum that they're having to impose on their students today.
Yeah, there is a cut in the creativity which would engage our students in different ways, but it is a cookie cutter sort of system. Christian is asking the next question, which was in the list, so right on. He's asking, "What is your position on recess? And how would you track compliance?" He says, "I see policies on it, but recess doesn't seem to actually happen or be enforced." And here I'd like to add, when my daughter was in school, five moms from different parts of Miami-Dade lobbied, one of them was me, lobbied the school board for recess and we were allocated 20 minutes three times a week. But there was absolutely no oversight. And with the pressure on standardized testing and, you know, getting those grades, the kids ended up having no recess at all, which I think is inhuman. But let's see what your opinion is.
Yeah, no, I agree wholeheartedly. You know, I've seen it here in Doral as we saw, because we got to see a couple of site plans for schools come in front of us because of all the growth that we were having in Doral. And what I was shocked to see is there's no green space in schools. No green space, like it's not required for them to have like a basketball court and a park. And I mean, you know, unless that they're, they can create a, like an interlocal agreement where they could use such as like downtown Doral Park, which uses the park across the street. But really, it's not required in a certain extent to have green space, to have a field, to have, you know, spaces for these children to have, you know, certain sports and arts and things. So, I think that, you know, we're limiting our children and their abilities tremendously by cutting those. And I think they need the time to be able to go out and socialize. And here's a thing that I find outrageous is that we're telling these kids or we're reprimanding them for not being able to sit still in class and, you know, talking too much. But then we don't give them time to actually go out and do those things so that they can come into the class and understand that there's a time where they can sit, where they have to sit and learn and retain information and follow the curriculum. You know, so we're reprimanding them, but we're not giving them the opportunity to do it in a way where it's, where it's healthy for them. And this is a complaint that I hear from parents at all levels. And, you know, one of the reasons that I got so encouraged to run for this position when I found out that the person that is there now, Ms. Castillo, was retiring from it, was, one, I have a child who is a school-aged child that's going to be going into, you know, public school and I will be experiencing a lot of these things. So, I wanted to be a part of that solution. But second, I'm surrounded by mothers and fathers and, you know, guardians of children of this age, everywhere from, you know, four years old to high school students. All my friends and people around me that have kids in these, in this age range and are experiencing, and most of the calls and, you know, experiences that I had with parents were complaints about what's happening in our schools, which is why I was encouraged to start our PTA event, which we have every year. Had it for six years where I bring educators from the community, teachers, parents, volunteers, mental health specialists, all types of professionals that come together. We started with 48 parents. We now, at our last event, had over 200 parents. We come together, you know, once a year and really it should be more than once a year. But it's, you know, it takes a lot to put these events together. And we have great conversation about how we can make change in some of these issues that we are all experiencing as parents. And so, I was very encouraged to get involved and was encouraged really by my community to get involved at this level now because of my experience in the municipality and the relationships I've built moving forward to be able to, you know, hopefully forge some of these changes that we're talking about within our school board. Unfortunately, what we've seen in our school board over the last couple of years is we don't have a lot of parents who are on the actual school board who have kids in school. It's, you know, I believe that right now, maybe, I think, you know, one school board member has a child who is in high school. But we have people who, I don't discount that they're educators in that experience. And you can't, you can't discount their experience of being in the classroom. But I think that it's multifaceted and you need to have experience of policymaking, budgeting, large budgeting. You know, being a parent and experiencing these stresses that our children are experiencing on a daily basis and have the communication with the community, being able to sympathize and hear them and then be that vehicle for change for them. So, for me, those were the motivators to be able to do this and to get involved in this position.
Okay, thank you. So, we're going to go into the mental health area. We went through the first ones and the second ones, which had to do with the anxiety and the depression and the pressure that work is going. Monica and José Suárez ask in Spanish, ¿Cuáles son sus ideas al respecto de brindar servicios de salud mental a nuestros hijos? ¿Y qué haría usted al respecto de bullying?
So, just, de nuevo, esto es algo que he sido, he apoyado en como mi posición como vicealcaldesa de Eldorado. Con eventos que he hecho, varios eventos por siete años, he hecho eventos todos los años sobre el mental health y el bullying en nuestros colegios. Empezando con equipando a los padres con las herramientas que necesitan para, número uno, saber cuándo tu hijo está haciendo bullying. Cómo identificar el tipo de bullying que están teniendo porque puede ser virtual, puede ser físico, puede ser, hay diferentes formas de tener bullying. Mentar, emocionar, hay muchas formas de bullying. Identificar eso y cómo accesar al colegio y decirle al colegio o donde sea, porque a veces no en el colegio, puede ser en un deporte que lo tengas, puede ser en una clase de arte, puede ser en muchas diferentes formas que ese niño sea, sea bullying. Entonces, es importante como...
Entonces, es importante como padre tener las herramientas para saber y entender ese proceso o la forma que ese niño está haciendo bullying y saber cómo identificarlo y después confrontarlo con el niño. Una de las cosas que yo soy muy apasionada es que veo que padres que son muy involucrados cuando los niños son pequeños empiezan a dejar esa involucración en una etapa del niño que es súper importante y en la transición al adolescente. Empezamos a pensar que ellos necesitan su privacidad y necesitan, y como tenemos en los teléfonos ahorita y tenemos tantas redes sociales, no queremos ser intrusivo a la privacidad del niño. Y yo estoy de acuerdo eso a un cierto punto. Es el momento más importante para estar involucrado con la vida de tu hijo. Y hay formas de hacer eso sin ser intrusivo y darle la privacidad a su hijo y hacer que ellos hagan esa decisión y puede ser como hasta un learning experience para ese niño. So yo siempre he sido muy, he sido una persona que ha apoyado mucho tener profesionales que pueden equipar a los padres y que hayas recursos en los colegios para poder tener alguien con quien puedes ir a ayudar con el problema. Porque lo que hemos visto en muchos casos como no hay una persona en colegio identificada para diliar con estos problemas, a veces los padres van a la maestra o van al principal o van al assistant principal o van a otro, un teacher que es, que está arriba de la maestra de la maestra del niño y tienen tanto ya under play y no están equipados tampoco para diliar con la situación, porque desafortunadamente a veces no tienen el training y el conocimiento de cómo hacer, cómo atacar esta situación. Entonces, van a esa persona que no puede ayudarlos o no es que no los pueda ayudar, que no tienen la herramienta para hacerlo. Entonces, los padres se sienten muy frustrados porque ven su hijo pasando por esto y no tienen con quién ir para resolver el problema. So yo creo que hay que tener una persona, un protocolo identificado en los colegios de cómo van a diliar con el bullying o con un niño que está teniendo problemas o está enseñando señas de salud mental y emocional.
Okay, entonces, your position would be to have more mental health experts in school? Because right now we have rotating mental health experts for thousands of kids.
For me, for me, claro, no sería solamente tener más recursos de una persona con esos, con esa expertise, pero tener un protocolo que se siga para todos los niños, o sea, para todas las familias que necesiten de este servicio. Porque como dices, como hay una persona que se rota entre varios, entre miles de estudiantes o varios escuelas, el proceso puede tomar mucho tiempo y eso puede ser también un proceso que los padres se sienten frustrados de nuevo porque no tiene la atención que debe tener. Y uno no sabe la severidad de que ese niño le está afectando mentalmente. So hay que poder identificar eso desde el principio.
Yeah, and we are having these problems of depression in school. I mean, we have serious depression, suicidal issues. You know, there's very, very serious things going on at a very young age. We're talking 10-year-olds trying to suicide. So this is very, very serious because this is the generation who's sending you to nursing home, Ms. Rala. So, you know, just to bear that in mind, this is their base. This is where, you know, they're growing on this level of stress. And one thing that I have observed, which hasn't been mentioned up to now, is these kids are risk averse. So they do not take chances. They don't want to try new things because things are supposed to be done one way for the test or whatever way the teacher says or the system says. So they won't make a line to try to draw something new, which is my experience. But they would also not pick their hand to give their own opinion.
Right.
Which is very serious for a citizen's point of view.
Yeah, absolutely.
So I'm going to continue with the next question and Christian, I'll get back to you. So Karida Bosa Merida, she is an ABA therapy provider and an advocate. And her question is, what is your stance on allowing needed registered behavioral technicians in the school to work with children with ASD? So for those who don't know, ASD is autism spectrum disorder.
Yes, absolutely. Again, another topic that I strongly support and another discussion I've had with several teachers. So what's happening because the spectrum has become so wide at this point and you could be anywhere in the spectrum. A lot of these children are being incorporated into regular classes, which is absolutely, you know, they should be. They should be, yeah, put with kids who, you know, who don't have, who don't have a learning disability. However, what happens is the teacher has to spend a lot more time with that child or that child needs more behavioral therapy. So what I've heard from teachers is that they need that assistance and it would be great to have that assistance within the classrooms when these children are being put into, they're being put into normal, into regular classroom environments, which I think is a healthy, is a healthy thing for them and even for the other children. But the teachers just don't have the resources or the time to dedicate to what that student needs and what's best for their developmental progress. So I absolutely support having more assistance for them in the classrooms when available and needed. And there's a lack of that opportunity currently because of funding sometimes and even knowledge of parents being able to identify and asking for the need for that student. And a lot of times I think parents may even feel that their child will be singled out and pulled out of a certain learning environment. So they don't want to identify the child. I've seen where parents do not identify that their child may have a learning disability and then they don't know the resources that are available to them. So I think, again, this is an educational opportunity for parents to be able to understand that there's resources available to them and that we can, and that schools can provide those resources to be able to help the development of the child.
Particularly with ASD, with autism spectrum disorder, parents are very much in tune with their children. They are pocketing out thousands of dollars in therapies of all kinds and they speak up. The Art Check works with a foundation called Brian's Art to provide all sorts of services for them. And, you know, I think in that case, we have an issue that needs a lot of attention because these parents are literally, you know, cutting corners everywhere to be able to work with their students. We have a big amount of children in the spectrum, from young kids all the way to teenagers that are actually in FIU at this point, integrated in our classes. And those are not parents that shut up. Those are parents that have a very, very loud voice.
Oh, 100%, yeah. So I've worked a lot with, so in my own businesses, I have incorporated autistic adults, young adults now, to work in our environment, to incorporate them into society and into the workforce. I think that's extremely important and I agree with you. I think the parents that obviously have the children and they understand the developmental disorders that they may have, they are absolutely active in finding ways to better their quality of life and their learning abilities. However, I've heard from teachers, and again, this may be that there's not enough resources available to the teachers or tools available to the teachers that they're like, well, I have a child in my class that I know is on the spectrum and no one's identified it and I'm not getting any help in dealing with the behavioral issues of this child. Does that make sense? So this is what I'm hearing from teachers is they're saying, you know, I've gone to administrators or I've gone to the parents and they're like, no, 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 there's nothing, there's nothing wrong with the child. And the teacher's saying, look, maybe I'm not an expert in this, but I'm telling you that there's a, there is a behavioral issue and we need support strictly for the benefit of your child, strictly for the benefit of, you know, making sure that whatever the developmental delay or even learning disability that the child may have, that we identify it quickly, that we target it and that we provide resources so that the child is successful and reaches their full potential. So I think that it may not be as common, but it is, it is common in some cases. And I think that it's something that we need to equip our teachers and our district with to be able to provide tools to the parents to say, this is not, it's not a bad thing. We want to provide the best tools and resources available to you so that your child is successful and the teacher is successful in providing the education that that child needs.
Okay, I'd like to share Christian's experience with his kindergartner. I think you might be able to identify considering you have one. He says, in kindergarten, my son started having anxiety over SAT, decreased sleep, couldn't eat, developed tics. He was convinced he wouldn't go to the first grade unless he passed. I saw anxiety take over his love for learning. What changes can we make to prevent this in young kids? And may I add, some charter schools are basically bribing our students to get high grades with gift cards. So I think that's terrible.
I mean, honestly, in my opinion is kindergartners should not be taking SATs. You know, I think that it's, at that level, you know, they're learning, they're just starting to understand and comprehend and really start to retain information. And learning should be enjoyable and it's the base that they're gonna have for the rest of their life on what school means to them. If they're depressed and not excited to go to school and learn at that age, there, I mean, that's just, you know, it's depressing to me as a parent, you know, for that child and for that experience. So, you know, I think that that's something that is very concerning and it's absolutely something we need to advocate, you know, for and make sure that we are providing the best educational resources for our students, but that we're not stressing them to the point where they can't even, where learning is not enjoyable. And because of the idea they're not even retaining information at that point. If you are not enjoying or if you're not, if you're more stressed about passing a test than you are about, you know, learning the information that you're getting at that level, your base is gonna be very unstable. So, you know, I mean, right now, my son loves going to school. He absolutely loves it. And I think it's because they make it enjoyable and fun for him and there's not that, that level of stress and I hope that that continues. And I would definitely be an advocate for see a change, to see a change for our students at that level. Because, again, although we need to prepare them for, you know, future grade levels, which will be considerable amount of testing, you know, if they're fearful from their first experiences in school as to, I'm not gonna get to the next grade level because I can't pass a test. You know, I think that there is a lot more to be said about that than what the student is gaining. So, you know, I think that's a very disappointing experience and he's not alone. There's a lot of parents that have had that experience, not only in kindergarten, but in many different grade levels. I know parents that have had to pull their kids out again. They've tried everything. They tried public school, they tried private school and they tried charter school. And it ultimately ended up putting their kid in homeschooling because the amount of anxiety that it caused that child to be concerned about, you know, the test and where they would be standardized, you know, the standardized, which really I think standardized testing is categorizing children versus, you know, it doesn't tell you what the child is learning, it's just categorizing the children. So that's, I think that's a problem that we need to tackle.
The testing industry is a billion-dollar test industry. You're a business person. Are you ready to confront them?
Absolutely. I mean, if it's in the benefit of our children, yes, absolutely. I think that we need to do what's best for our children. And you turned me to an amazing book, which, you know, I told you when I started to read it, it's frustrating because I'm like, wow, how do we do this? How do we incorporate this type of teaching into our schools? And I've had, I've actually recommended it to a couple of teachers and I'm like, listen to this book. I've shared it with them and I'll share it with everyone that's here, which, again, Laura turned me to it. It's called What Schools Could Be by Tom Perkins and it's amazing. It's really been an eye-opener as to what our education could be and how our classrooms could be and how successful our kids could be in learning and the amount of retention that they could have and what that would, what that would do for our society is just incredible and really giving them, putting at their fingertips, the tools that they're gonna have for the rest of their lives because technology is here to stay. So, you know, again, I told you Laura, when I started to read, I felt frustrated because I was like, how do I, how do I do this? Because I want to do it. How do I, how do I implement this? And how do we break down some of those barriers that are there to be able to allow our children that opportunity?
Okay, thank you. So, next question comes from Ana Kidos. She says, I would like to know, what is the plan if we cannot open schools for special education kids? Are they to follow the same model as the general education? Because this model does not work for all of them and ESE kids have suffered the most during this pandemic. And I can advocate for that, having discussed this with many of my students, ESE students.
Yes, so I think, and I would dare to say that it's not even the same for every grade level. It's not just, you know, special needs students, but, you know, my four-year-old is not learning the same virtually as, again, a high school student. It's almost impossible. So I think that this needs to be looked at at some point on a more special, on a more one-to-one in the sense of grade level. So you gotta look at how is this affecting kindergartners, first graders, second graders? And maybe at some point when we're ready to open schools, because I don't think we will be at this point when school's supposed to open. It doesn't look like that's gonna be happening and I think the superintendent has pretty much made that clear that unless we're in phase two, there's not gonna be any reopening. I absolutely agree that the parents need to have a choice. If, you know, the problem of this reopening and the virus in schools is multi-generational. If you live in a multi-generational home, then your experience of going back to school is gonna be different than someone who doesn't. You know, so I think that there needs to be choices as to reopening the schools. And I think I strongly support the plan that the superintendent has put forward, the recommendations that he's put forward, where it's something that that allows parents to have that choice based on their family. So, you know, I think that, I think that we have an opportunity to get open when the time is right with the right procedures in place, where that means that there's availability for social distancing and masks and so on. But it's gonna be very different for a first grader than it is gonna be for a sixth grader and eighth grader. And it's gonna be different for someone who has a special needs student. And that's something that we need to look at on a case-by-case basis. As far as students who have special needs, there's tools and resources given to them at schools that they can't get at home. So, you know, maybe there is an opportunity for them to go back to school sooner than other students. But again, that needs to be a choice of the parents and the families. And I think that the experts that are telling, are telling us, when is the right time for the schools to reopen? There's no doubt that students are gonna learn more efficiently and they're gonna learn better when they're with their teachers and with their peers. I don't think that there's anybody that will really, that can argue that, you know, that a majority of students are not gonna get their full, their full learning experiences the way we're doing it through virtual learning. Now, that's going to change also when schools reopen. They're gonna roll out a new, a new plan for virtual learning. I think one of the downfalls that the program that they had in the last semester of 2019, In the last semester of of last of two thousand nineteen, I'm sorry, of two thousand twenty. Was um that there wasn't enough face-to-face time with um. With students. So there was a lot of teachers that were not connecting virtually with the students. Uh and I I got this from different parents. There were some parents that tell me, yes, I connect with my teacher, the t- the student connects with the teacher for three hours a day. And there were some students that said, or some parents that said, I never saw the teacher, I saw him once a week. So I think that having a little bit more of that sit-down connecting face-to-face with the teacher will definitely help in the distance learning. Um you know, scenario that we may see and the reopening of school.
Florida has a system that was installed in nineteen ninety-seven that is virtual education. Which is Florida Virtual School.
Right.
Has uh Miami-Dade considered looking at Florida Virtual School as a model?
No, I I don't know what curriculum they have looked at specifically for opening up. But I do, I I uh followed all of the uh the announcements that have been made by the superintendent on enhancing. The uh the digital learning that they will, the distance learning that they will have. So I I'm not sure that they've looked at that particular model, but I have heard of it. And I actually know a couple of parents that are gonna pull their child out of school for the year and put them in 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 that uh. In in that program or other homeschooling programs.
Well, Florida Virtual School is a ve- is very hard to get into though. It's uh although it's a public offering, it's very, very hard. The process of getting into Florida Virtual School is almost impossible. But it is a program that has been around since nineteen ninety-seven, so it's been tailored and it's been fine-tuned several times. Um so you know, this is something that personally I would suggest. We don't include as as a county and as an educational system.
Yeah.
Uh because they have practices that, you know, some of them have proven to be really, really good. And you can see reviews by parents regarding this. There's a lot of reviews by parents.
Hopefully, they will uh release what, what the, I mean, they're gonna have to before schools open, release what program they'll be using. But to to my understanding as of right now, I have not seen a a um seen a curriculum. Per se, that they're gonna be using in distance learning. They just said it will be an enhanced system than what we we were seeing. At the end of the last quarter, uh at the end of the last semester.
Okay, so from Liz Cantola and with a lot of emphasis on the how, so she wants you to be very specific. How do you think schools should open?
Well, I I think schools should oh reopen with a distance uh with a social distancing. So which means you need to have less kids in a class to be able to separate uh the desks. Now, we know that that's not gonna be possible, the six feet is not gonna be possible, even with less kids in a class and some of the structures that we currently have. Within the s- within the system. So you know, that's that's good. It's something that's gonna be difficult, but I think that we should be able to provide at least minimum three feet, which has been recommended by the C D C. Um even though six feet is what they're the standard, there has been recommendations that three feet would be sufficient. So um I think that's extremely important. Um I think the social distancing is gonna be extremely important. Um I really, I really believe in the hybrid model uh that they're offering where it gives opportunity. So that there is a more in-depth cleaning um in in the in the classrooms. Um and in the, you know, lunch halls and things like that. So I think that uh providing for, you know, less students at one time in the schools. Also, you can have easier contract contact tracing. Um tho- all those models that have been, or those models that have been put out, I think would be the most efficient and the safest ways to get back to school. Uh until we see that either the the contagious, the contagion rate of this virus. Has changed or there is better treatment or there's a vaccine. I've also heard a lot of people say they're not gonna get the vaccine. So you know, I think that this is gonna be something that we're gonna have to. Uh live with for a for quite a bit. And um I think the ex- the the exact how has to be with uh procedures in place. That are going to uh reduce the rate of contact, uh you know, should kids ha- come back to school at a larger rate now. You know, if we provide multiple options like going back for five days, hybrid or online, and a majority of people say going back for five days. How do you reduce the the classroom sizes? That's gonna be a challenge. Uh you know, I don't have the answer for that. I think that maybe. Uh until a certain point, we can't offer the five days back. We may just only be able to offer hybrid and and online. So that there is an opportunity to reduce the contagion, the the rate of contag- of 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 contagion, of contagious. Uh children um i- if if we need to, you know, if we see a large group of of families decide to send their kids back to school. So you know, I think that the the how is implementing protocols for them. Um mask wearing has to be, you know, it it has to be um something that's required for the students. I think again, it's hard for kids who are smaller. My son leaves it on, but there's times where he, you know, pulls down his mask. Because he feels like you can't hear him, um where he feels like he can't, like he's sucking in the the fabric of the mask when he's speaking. So I think it's gonna be harder for smaller children um than it is going to be for an older, for an older student, for a child who's. Or for a a young adolescent who understands that they need to keep their mask on and they need to keep their distance and they can't. You know, hug their friends. You know, my my son sees his friends and he wants to hug them. So I think it'll be very, very difficult on that aspect, but um but you know, there's no doubt that our kids have to at some point get back to school.
Okay. So continuing with the opening, um. Give me just one minute because I don't wanna repeat. There's some questions that we have already answered. I just don't wanna repeat that. Uh so if when we are in school, you see a surge in the contagious within the school. How will, how would you think contact tracing would happen and would you close schools? Because there, the school is the place where people are getting sick.
Yeah, again, I think that the best way to control this at right now would, or you know. I I say right now, but we're not, we're not gonna open right now, but let's say a couple of months down the line or a few weeks, twelve weeks down the line, let's say. Um would be to limit the amount of students in a class at one time. Um so it seems like the hybrid model would be the best option. This would give us an opportunity to be able to isolate a group of students that where, you know, if you have a student who came positive, you have a smaller group or universe. Of students that you can identify um and immediately, you know, keep at home. Um sanitize where that student has been, um you know, identify the teachers that have been around that student. Um and immediately, you know, try and 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 stop the 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 spread from that that moment. Now, whether the school would need to be shut down depends, I think, on how many students are 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 diagnosed as positive at that point. Um whether you need to decide you need to shut down and keep that 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 group home. The other thing is that if you do the hybrid model where you have, let's say, Group A and Group B, you know, you're you're ki- you can kind of isolate. The the students that may be um may have have had contact and put them on a distance learning model. Rather quickly and not, you know, deny the opportunity of of being in school to the other group of students. Who um who are are still actively able to to go to school. Um and then you have the the problem, which, you know, everybody is struggling with, that parents need to go back to work. So a lot of parents that need to go back to work, they need to provide, you know, provide for their family. Uh luckily, we're seeing a lot of uh corporations turn to the virtual way of doing business as well. And a lot of people are being able to work from home and that's very convenient, but there's some businesses that can't. And there's some small businesses that just can't function on keeping their workforce at home. They're, you know, they they need to be uh either at the workplace or their job requires them to, you know, to travel or to be, you know, to be out. Of the home. Um so when you have smaller children and you need to go provide, you know, there there becomes a question of, you know. Who who's gonna provide the childcare and how is that going to be feasible for that family? And that's very concerning. And um and and it's a problem also in um, you know, in our underserved communities and our underprivileged communities. And there's a big concern there and we wanna make sure we're equitable in in the education that we're providing for for those families. And um you know, a lot of times what happens is the kid will stay home alone and when they're home alone, are they really gonna connect? And are they gonna, you know, are they gonna do the distance learning um in certain, you know, in 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 certain uh, you know, economic. Standard, you know, economic, social um aspects of of each district. So I think that there's a a socioeconomic uh standard that that we also need to look at. That uh provides the best uh opportunity for those kids. So again, I, in my opinion, I think the hybrid model provides for us the ability to go back to school. But still have some control over, you know, if there is a large spread again. And then if we see that there's, that that things are getting better and kids are back at school and we're not seeing a spread, then we slowly start going back into the five days a week. Um you know, but all of this could change very quickly depending on what happens with the virus. The virus.
What about the teachers? We have this, at this point today, we have a a a, you know, the Florida teachers suing.
Yeah, absolutely.
Because we, I mean, they've been in contact with the same kids and they have families and going to pay for their leave, for their quarantine.
Hundred percent, yes, absolutely. I mean, that's. Yeah, that's a question I was having with a teacher today too, who uh has her own health issues and she's a kindergarten teacher. And um and she's like, you know, I'm very torn. She's like, I wanna go back to school with my kids. Um I live for teaching. I love my children. I, you know, there's a part of me, she's like, there's a part of me that feels like it's not a normal school year. Unless I'm, you know, going back to school and decorating my classroom and welcoming my kids into the into the classroom. But I'm I'm worried for my own health. Um and uh and she feels she hasn't been spoken for, by the way, too. She feels like, you know, no group has spoken for her either. And yeah, we we tend to forget about that as well as that the teachers, there are several teachers that have health concerns. That are concerned about having to go back into the classrooms. Um so that's absolutely something that we have to look at and I think that if we are, if we are uh provide a platform for teachers to be able to. Um give their opinions through surveys and asking the questions and, you know, and and making them part of the decision-making process. You'll find teachers that say, hey, look, I'm healthy, my family is healthy and I can go back and can be back in classrooms. And you'll have teachers say, I'm concerned and I I, you know, I I don't, I cannot go back to the classroom for, you know, A B C reason, health reasons. Um in that case, that teacher can be um, you know, can be put to do the online for the students that are. Are uh asking for the online classes or the fa- the families that have opted to stay online. Then those teachers um should be, should be assigned to those those classrooms. And the ones that can come back then can be assigned to the hypermodels, um should we go into that phase. So I think that there is ways to to be able to accommodate it. Uh because I don't believe that, again, every household is gonna be ready to fully go back into into uh school. Whether it's at a hybrid model or any model because they live in multi-generational homes. So that's something that I think that we can find an equal ground for. Um once we have the real figures of how many families are gonna choose to stay online.
Um okay, thank you. So here's, we're get getting towards the end. Uh we have a form, a few more questions. Um Cesar Murillo asks, are your, are are any of your children currently attending or have attended public school in Miami-Dade?
Yes. So right now, I have my child enrolled in a B P K program. Uh which is an early childhood learning program by the Early Childhood Coalition. So um but I do plan on enrolling him um in our, in our uh public school system. Um wa- for kindergarten and I I didn't do it for B P K just because I was so comfortable with the. The 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 teachers he currently had and and he was, you know, he was uh, he had built great relationships. With his group of friends. Um and I felt that, you know, he needed, that it it really was bringing out the best in his ability to learn. Um and retain information and I I just, I saw a three sixty change with him from the time I put him into school. Um to when he was at home. So um I decided to keep him where he is, but I absolutely plan on enrolling my child in the public schools.
Okay, so the next from the same, um it's actually father-son pair here. Uh he wants a yes or no answer.
Okay.
Do you agree with Governor DeSantis or President Trump that the schools should be opened as things currently stand today?
No.
Thank you. That was concise. Do you agree that the city or state should be liable for any sickness and or death of students and or faculty of the public schools?
Is that a yes or no also?
No, you can go.
Oh, I I I think, I think, I think that depends on when we open and what standard we opened under and what procedures we're we're putting. You know, where we're allocating. I mean, unfortunately, we just have no control over this disease. So you know, if you have all the procedures in place, you're doing everything you possibly can and everybody is following the protocols. And we opened at a time where we felt, based on expert um analysis and and that the hospitals are not overcrowded and so on. Um you know, I don't think there's anybody you can really blame at tha- at that point. Um but again, I think there's, there has to be certain procedures put in place and and we need to make sure that there's a a protocol to follow those procedures.
So not liable?
Not liable. Uh su- uh you know, not free-for-all either. If there's no procedures put in place and you're just saying. Everybody come back with the way things are right now. We're not gonna provide, we're not gonna require masks and we're not gonna require social distancing. I mean, we just can't go back to what we were doing, you know, December of two thousand nineteen. It's not, it's not realistic for a safe environment, if that makes sense.
Yeah, thank you. And our last question today. If the opportunity presents itself in the next four years to run for mayor of Doral, would you run?
I think that serving my community at any level is always uh is always something that I will consider. Um I I I'm not looking four years in advance. I'm looking at today, right now, where I could best serve our community. And I think that my um my experience here in Doral as a council member, I think my private sector experience. And I think more importantly, being a mother right now. Um that will live through the experiences that our families are experiencing on a daily basis, the challenges that our kids face. And understanding what our children are feeling and our and our our parents are feeling um that of what's coming out of our education system. And um having that communication with parents, that open uh flow of communication is extremely important. I think that I, that's what I will bring to this position. Um I think it's what people know of me here in Doral, the accessibility, the ability to. To to identify a problem, solve the problem, you know, work with the community. Listen, which is extremely important. Um I think that those are really the the the. What I bring to the table um to to be a vehicle of, you know, of getting things done. For our community at the school board, whether that means bringing change or um, you know, or advocating for. You know, for new programming within our schools. So right now, this is my focus. This is where I want to be. This is where I want to provide the best quality of life for our families, our students and our teachers. And I will never neglect my community of Doral. My heart is very much here. Um this is where I live. This is where my businesses are. This is where my children are going to school. So you know, I will very much continue to be involved. I've given eight years of my life to this community. And I will continue to serve it to the best of my ability. And I look forward to being able to continue to serve the community as a school board member. So um you know, eh anything else that comes on the table at a certain point, I will, you know, I will look at. And if the community uh is willing to support me in that endeavor, then then, you know, then I will, I will look towards our community. To um to continue to um give me the trust that they've put in me to to serve them.
So maybe.
You never know. Maybe I run for governor.
Um. Asking, as a school board member, you do not only represent District Five. As a school board member, you vote for the whole district.
Correct.
For one of the largest districts, educational districts in the country. Underserved children.
Yep.
And the experience that you're going to achieve. You're you you've been telling us that you're going to get a lot of experience in the process of doing this. So for for years from now, you will have achieved this experience. Or the question is, are you willing to keep going with this experience?
Yeah.
Eight years, which.
Really, absolutely, absolutely, a hundred percent. Yeah, I mean, here's the thing. I and I said this when I ran for 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 ca- for council. I may get to do a lot of this and find myself with so many um, you know, roadblocks or frustrations. That I, that it it's it's something that affects my health and my family. Um then it may not be the right thing for me and I will gladly step down from all uh, you know, a a public service positions. I I think that it takes a very mentally stable individual, very strong individual to be able to. Confront a lot of the challenges we find in the public sector. There's a lot of bureaucracy and I. And I can't do it alone. I have colleagues that I have to be able to rely on to support the 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 initiatives that I would like to bring forward. And that's where I told you again, when I, when I was reading the book, is that I felt I felt, I felt frustrated that I was like, okay, how do I, unless I get everybody to hear this and see what an amazing opportunity there is, how do I get the change to start, right? Um but I can never lose confidence in what I, who I am, what I believe in, what I stand for, and my ability to be a part of that change. So yes, if I find myself, you know, being very, very um, very um what's the word I'm looking for? If I find myself to be very effective in this position in getting change done, um if there's one thing I do is I give my hundred percent to whatever I decide to do. Um so I will give my one hundred and ten percent to this position and understanding every aspect of what I can do for our schools and our children and our families. And if I find myself being very effective, then of course I would continue to serve at that level and do everything I can to make sure that that our schools are the best that they can be for our community and our families. And I look towards people who have the experience um and have a different perspective to make me be better um so that we can be better as a community.
One of the first things you said is that we need a parent in the school board, that there's only one that is a parent. So we'd like your kid to be in eighth grade by the time you leave the school board and not in fourth grade.
Yeah, for sure.
You get into the school board, you know, be a parent that stays in the, as a parent there, because
Yeah.
You know, it it is, it is a point of view that hard, you know, parents go, we go talk at the school board, we give our opinion, but then the the school board decides on something, but then there's no accountability. There's like Christian said, there's no um compliance and nobody's checking.
Right.
And yeah, and we have
I don't want to take away the fact that many of the school board, I think all of the school members have been parents. They all have kids and may have grandkids. But it's very different being a parent actively dealing with the, you know, the 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 challenges than having been a parent, you know, twenty to to someone who was in school twenty years ago or ten years ago or fifteen years ago. It's just a different world. Different world from when I was in school. And I, you know, I graduated fifteen years ago, sixteen years ago from high school. So and it's a different world now. So can imagine someone who graduated thirty years ago. Or, you know, or who has kids who were in school ten years ago. It's a different world. And you know, one of the things that I heard from parents and I hear from parents all the time is it is, it's a roadblock every time I want to do something, every time I want to get something done at the school board. Every time I want, you know, answers to curriculum, every time I want to speak to someone about what my child is going through. My child is not a number. My child is a person with feelings and emotions and frustrations. And they're not just a number, and I need to talk to someone. And they they, there's no one for them to turn to. And like you said, a lot of them don't even know that the school board member exists because, you know, they don't make themselves available. I'm sorry, but it's just the truth. And and I think that that's something that I would be very different in. And I think that I've proven that in the track record I've had in Doral.
Okay, so we have Colleen Wright, uh the education reporter from the Miami Herald who just came in. Um so uh welcome. And let me just read what we're doing. Okay, yeah, she's just interested in in listening to everything you have to say. So I'll be sending her this uh this recording. Um if anybody has any additional follow-up questions, this is a good moment to type them. And if you, they don't come up right now and you still want to send them over to Ms. Fraga, I'll make sure they go through. Um personally, I want to thank you all for being here, for um taking the time. For those who are not here, I'll be sending them the recording as well. And if you want anybody else that you know to get this recording, just shoot them, shoot an email to info at thearchecmiami.com and I'll make sure to get it uh your way. So I'll write the email address right here. Actually, I'm gonna put my own. It's gonna be easier. And um you can send, you know, any requests for this video. And I'll also upload it to our YouTube channel so people can see it. Um thank you very much, Ms. Fraga. It was very nice having you
Yeah.
For your passion. And uh we wish you all the best.
Thank you. Thank you so much for joining everyone who came. And thank you, Laura, again, for putting this together.
Thank you.